Good evening, we'll go ahead and get our November Planning Commission meeting open. First order of business will be roll call. I will need a motion to excuse Mr. Self.
I can motion to excuse Mr. Self.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll do that by general consensus.
Aye.
Next item would be approval of the agenda. Do we have any?
We got a roll caller.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the roll call. I'm sorry, I'm in such hurry here. Would you go ahead and call the roll please?
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Loftus.
Here.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Schreider.
Here.
And Mr. Self is absent.
Next, we will approve the agenda. Do we have any changes? Anything that we need to add to the agenda? Any items? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda from October 2nd meeting.
Mr. Chair, I second.
That will do by general consensus. All right, and the last item before we get into a public hearing is going to be approval of the minutes from October Planning Commission meeting. Were there any changes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the October 2nd meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that as well.
We'll do that by general consensus as well.
Aye.
Perfect, all right. Now that we're through all of that fun stuff, we will go ahead and move to our first public hearing, PUD 19-1, SSP number one. The applicant has requested that the case remain tabled until December. So with that, House of Commons, if anybody would like to go ahead and put together a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to table PUD 19-1, specific site plan number one until next meeting.
I'll second.
And do we need to do a, do you do that by general consensus?
Yes.
Aye. All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and get to our decision item, PUD 519 mod 819 Beaver Valley Shopping Center signage. If you could go ahead and, oh, if you could go ahead, Staff, if you could go ahead and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Before you sign application requesting approval of a minor modification to PUD 519, should you choose to approve this modification, it would allow for the construction of a multi-tenant ground sign along CJ Drive in order to advertise tenants within the Beaver Valley Shopping Center. So the Beaver Valley Shopping Center was purchased by Group Lamont in mid-2018, and as you guys are aware, they've kind of, they've done a few renovations to the property. And as part of those renovations, they have requested that they be permitted to install a large ground sign up along CJ in order to advertise the tenants within the shopping center. So the applicant is proposing a 30-foot tall sign that would contain a nine-foot tall by 16-foot wide electronic display, and then an additional seven-foot tall by 16-foot wide area for tenants, 21 tenants from within the shopping center, as shown as the rendering. The total square footage for the sign would come to 304 square feet per side, 608 square feet total, so it's two-sided. The applicant has stated that the purpose of having the larger sign up top, the electronic sign would be for it to be visible from 35, and then the sign below would be for visibility along CJ Drive. Just a quick look, this is a kind of a mock-up that Randy did for us using the street view, Google Earth and Google Street View. So this is along CJ Drive going towards North Fairfield, then this is CJ Drive going towards Grange Hall, and then this is what it would look like on 35 going towards Zinnia. And then this is across the highway. I mean, it's still facing towards Zinnia, but you would be driving towards Dayton that way. So we do have some concerns with the sign. Obviously, the first is with the overall size. You know, we took a look at some other signs, I have some examples of some other signs that we've approved in the past. This is the most recent one, this is the mall at Fairfield Commons. You guys approved that a couple of months ago. They actually requested two ground signs, so the total square footage for each of those signs was 377 square feet. That's two-sided, so. Mall at Fairfield Commons has over a million square feet of leasable tenant area. It's on, you know, it sits on 70 acres compared to the Beaver Valley Shopping Center, which has less than 100,000, 100,000 square feet of leasable area and sits on 11 acres. This is one that we recently had renovated, and this is for the shops of Beaver Creek, TSW Ross, Bronson Noble, that shopping center. So that sign is 30 feet tall. It's 180 square feet per side, 360 square feet total, and this is for a shopping center that's 162,000 square feet. Walmart, 410,000 square feet of leasable area in that shopping center. Sign's 40 feet tall. Sign is 192 square feet per side, 384 total. They do have two signs, they have one on Fairfield and one on 675. And then Green Crossing, which is closer in size to the Beaver Valley Shopping Center, they have 200 square feet total, so it's 100 square feet per side, it's 20 feet tall, and that shopping center is 78,700 square feet. And then, you know, one of the, one of the concerns that, one of the other concerns that we have is with, you know, the smaller, the smaller panels at the bottom. Each of those panels is approximately, well, not approximately, they're one foot tall each. So, you know, this is an example of kind of how things go wrong when you try to put too many tenants on one sign. Honestly, I've been, I've been working here for 17 years, I didn't know that sign existed until a couple of months ago, they called me and they wanted to add more panels onto it, and I was like, "What? What sign?" And, like, it's there, but there's just so much going on that you don't even see it anymore. And so that's, that's kind of the thing that we want to avoid. Also, our, you know, we had a concern kind of with the look of the sign. As you see, as we go through all these signs, you see they have, they have brick, they have ethos, they have kind of pillars encasing it on both sides, and, you know, with, with this sign, it's kind of just floating there, and it's just, it just looks really massive, and it's just going to look completely disproportionate to any other signs that we have within the city. So, you know, we have provided the applicant with some alternatives. You know, we talked to them about maybe having the bigger electronic display sign, you know, by itself, kind of in case, and then maybe doing that smaller sign at a different entrance, you know, along CJ. We also talked to them about, you know, maybe using the Laffino sign that is actually on 35. I don't, I don't know that I have a picture of it. It's up here, you can barely see it here. But that sign was originally used for the entire shopping center when, when the Laffino, when Laffino sold that portion of the shopping center, he just kept his part. Now, this sign is only on Laffino's property, and they just, they're, they haven't, like, tried to, I don't know that they've tried to work together to come up with something, maybe to renovate the existing sign, but it doesn't seem like something that they're interested in doing, because we did suggest it. So, you know, we have made suggestions to try to have something brought to you guys that we thought would work. Unfortunately, this isn't it, so we are recommending disapproval. We have added six conditions if you do choose to approve it. I would also be willing to recommend having the case tabled. The applicant is here, if you want to ask him some questions. If the applicant is willing to, you know, to work with the city to try to bring something in the future to, that would work for everyone, we could table the case so that they don't have to reapply or go through that whole process again, so that's, that's completely up to you guys. So we are recommending disapproval based on the six, we have added six conditions if you choose to approve, and we can answer any questions now, and also the applicant is here, if you would like to ask him any questions.
Steve, are we able to table after we've taken comments? Are we able to table after we've talked to the applicant?
Yeah, well, from the public.
Well, it's not about...
I mean, the applicant, then anyone from the public, then your discussion, and certainly at some point, then...
There's no public comment for this one?
Right.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me.
Yeah, you can table it when, if you can listen to comments, have a discussion, and then decide to table if that's something that you want to do.
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay. Yeah, I think with that, we'll go ahead and ask questions to the applicant, and then we'll make a decision from there, how we want to, how we move forward, so. With that, I will go ahead and start off to my right with Mr. Schreider.
Well, I actually have a couple of questions for Staff. Sorry?
Sorry.
I see if the applicant also has a presentation or anything. Do they have anything?
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Anything to present?
Do you want, would you like to make a presentation? What would you like to do?
Or just address questions?
You want to say a few things?
Yeah, before I answer your questions, I can say a few things.
Yeah, you can hear from there.
Thanks for that.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. We could be doing other things tonight, but...
Could you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, yes. My name is Jim Molnar. My company name is Wilson Electronic Displays. I'm here representing Group Lamont and Diane Silva, who's the property manager, they're out of Boca Raton, Florida. And I was hoping to address some of the things that were just recently stated. You know, a few things to keep in mind, I mean, they purchased, Group Lamont, I think purchased the property for over $1.3 million, right around there. They put like 100,000, over $100,000 with the renovations in there now, and they want to really try to increase the visibility of their tenants and get a new sign now on their property. One of the things that we have going against us, I guess, is we don't have any anchor tenants in there. So that's why all the tenants want a spot to be visible, and they're all set back, so they want to be brought outside as far as they can. And they would, again, they would all like a spot on the sign. We've been working on this since January, I've been working with Sandra and Jeff pretty much the whole time, and they've been great to work with. I've been pretty patient with this, I'm not opposed to tabling this until a later date, but the owner wanted to make, wanted to see if they can get the sign, and I kind of agree with her in that they want to put the sign on their property, and they, you know, with the other things, the other signs that were shown, I don't know if this is that disproportionate of the other signs. We can reduce the size maybe of the LED, and one of the staff recommendations was, you know, leaving the LED there on 35 and putting the monument sign in a different location. But doing that, we would have to put that on someone else's property, which we don't want to do that, and then it would be, you know, more expensive. We'd have to have two big foundations rather than just one foundation, and this is already on CJ Drive right there, and I know you guys saw the picture of the multi-tenant sign that was way up in the air, but this is on the ground, so you're going to be driving, and it's going to be a lot easier to see. And as being a tenant, if you could, if you were a tenant in there, you know, you would like it if your name was up there, even if it was a foot tall, and then you would still have access to the LED display too, to advertise more along Route 35. So that's, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I will go ahead and start with Mr. Schreider, am I right?
All right. So I'll start with Staff, please. Thank you. All right, so if something like this was approved, I remember back to the one that we just approved on North Fairfield Road with the LED sign, and there were a lot of conditions in there in the approval to only display certain things. There couldn't be flashing signs on the LED, there couldn't be like animation and things of that sort. I remember that kind of being in the conditions, but can you verify for me, like, if this was approved right now, could they, would there be restrictions on what they could display on the LED?
Yeah, our zoning code specifies electronic messaging, and it has to, it has to maintain the same message for two seconds, so it couldn't just, couldn't be like a continuous moving video or anything like that.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. And then also, in your comparison to the mall in Fairfield Commons, it was 377 square, was that, both sides, was the 377 total?
Yeah, that's total, yeah.
Okay. So is there currently in the zoning code for PUD 519, is there a size that's already allotted for that type of property?
PUD 519 was a PUD that was put into place prior to the city being incorporated. When they, when they did PUDs in the township days, they would give it underlying zoning, and that zoning is what dictated the, the allowed signage for the property. The allowed signage for that PUD is, is what falls into the B3 zoning, which is a five-foot tall sign, 25 square feet per side, 50 total.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Schwartz?
For comparison, do you know how long, or how large the sign is on 35, the big electronic sign down by the car dealerships?
I don't. Do either of you?
It's township, isn't it?
I want to say it was over, wasn't it over 500 per side? I believe it's, the actual is like 500 square feet per side.
Per side, okay.
I believe, yeah.
And then, do you know how large the current sign is that's there right now?
They actually don't have a sign, so they don't have a sign. There's a sign on, let me look at the, so there is no sign on this property right now. There is a sign, I believe it's here, on a different property, and that one is, I believe it's 25, 25 feet tall, probably in the area of 150 to 200 square feet per side.
Per side?
Yeah. And originally, that, that did advertise both this and, and this, and if you, I think if you look at it now, there's still, there are some tenants that advertise from...
From that sign?
Yeah, that are on there.
Okay. And what are the size comparisons, this is going to be a tough question, the sign that you showed that's over off of North Fairfield with all the little tiny...
Oh, that, this one?
That one. Do you know what size those blocks are?
I don't, but I want to say that they look as if they're about probably a foot tall, maybe a little bit less, probably nine inches, nine to 12 inches tall, I would say, each of those blocks, those panels.
If they're a foot tall, there's what, six, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, six, plus another size, so even the best would be eight feet.
Okay, okay.
If they're a foot tall.
Yeah. And that's all the questions I have for you. If the applicant could come up, please? Have you been in talks with the owner of the property that has the old sign?
No, I do not know Laffino's, I was not given a contact number or any information, no.
Okay, so you don't have any idea if they plan on tearing it down, leaving it?
I have no idea.
Okay. I also noticed that the sign that is provided has 21 slots for tenants. How many slots are available within that development?
I do believe there are 20 or, I think 21, maybe, right, it's right there, I think the 21 tenants, I do believe, it's right around there, I'm not exactly sure.
And how many tenants are in there currently, do you know?
No.
And do you know, I know that you don't have the contact information, do you know what the reasoning is that we're not negotiating or speaking with the other landowner that has the sign that's there currently?
I do not know.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Mr. Height?
Just one quick question for Staff, please. So if the applicant were to get ahold of the owner of the other sign, what process would that entail for them to redo that sign?
More than likely, we would, we would go through the same process, yeah. The sign is a little bit smaller, it's a little bit older, it does need renovation, so we would more than likely go through the minor mod process to get that approved.
Thank you very much, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Height. I guess, kind of piggybacking off that question, is the city legally able and willing to help negotiate or between Laffino and this property owner as a way to kind of bridge that gap?
I mean, we can provide them the information, but from, from what it seemed like is they weren't interested in doing that, but, I mean, because that is something that we would like to see, that sign is just sitting there.
Sure.
And just for the record, when you say "they," you're referring to the Group Lamont?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just clarify that.
What was the city, what was your overall, obviously you guys have been working together for a while on this, how large were you guys willing to negotiate down to give them, you know, you were talking about a ground-based LED, and then having a smaller, you know, monument sign up towards CJ. What was the city, what kind of, what were they thinking?
Well, as far as, we were thinking like the smaller monument sign would be five, six feet tall.
Sure, like a standard monument sign.
You know, yeah, just a standard monument sign, and then this one could be the 30 feet, we wouldn't have an issue with, you know, doing something that's kind of consistent with, with other signs that we have within the city. A 30-foot, 30-foot tall sign, you know, with masonry, you know, encasing the sign, like, we would, we wouldn't have an issue with that.
Okay, but so far, we've not been able to negotiate, it's been...
I mean, it, it's been almost a year, this is bigger than the last, than the last, you know, the last iteration that we had.
Gotcha.
We're like, we need something different, and it got bigger.
Gotcha.
So, it's, yeah, it's just...
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. I don't have any further questions. Do we have any second, second round?
Yeah, so on your last comment there, if, so say there was a secondary low sign installed somewhere else, and then this was a 30-foot tall sign, so you're stating that you would be okay with it still having the large LCD or LED screen and everything, so it looks just like that without the bottom part encased in brick, looks like all the other signs?
Correct, yes, we would be okay with, we would be more willing to bring that to Planning Commission and recommend approval.
Okay, so basically, you would be just splitting the sign in half. I mean, I'm just trying to get a visual, you'd be taking that bottom part, moving it somewhere else?
And moving it somewhere else and just having a, yes.
So I guess I'm struggling with what's different than with how it is now. If it was, say, wrapped in more masonry and ethos and things of that sort, the way it looks now...
That, the, the massing of those panels at the bottom, I mean, that, that sign in itself is, is probably bigger than what we would, is that eight feet, eight and a half feet tall?
Yeah.
That itself is just, it's just, it's massive, and, you know, you, you look at these, and, you know, it's, it's broken up, it's separated, there's some space in there, and it, it just, it doesn't feel so monolithic.
And you're, okay. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Height, you look like you're deep in thought.
No, I'm good, thank you.
I do, I guess I have things to say, maybe not questions. I guess my concern, and I kind of just opened this for discussion, is the real applicant isn't actually here, and they're, we're not getting, I'm not getting answers to my questions at least. I'm very curious about the 21 tenants, is that the actual spacing, and if it is the actual spacing, how many of those tenants are tenants that want to actually put something onto that board? I'm not so much opposed to the signage, I think that based upon their location, I think it's justified, right there next to 35, they're going to need something larger. It's not like North Fairfield where you have slower driving traffic.
It's 55.
And so my, I'd like to talk with the applicant, and frankly, sir, I'm not really sure how much correspondence you have, but I'd like an answer to why they aren't working with Laffino's, or why there hasn't been any communication, and what the plans are for that sign. Because I think it would look silly and would become more of a distraction if we do have two signs right there. I think, that's my other concern, is do we really want this wild-axe-throwing, all these things going through next to a busy highway where there isn't a stop sign, on down the road at least where there's the stoplight and the big huge massive sign by the car dealerships, there is a stoplight there so that people can kind of stop and look, but this is consistent through traffic, so that was the other consideration I had.
Mr. Schwartz, if I can piggyback, you know, at the same time...
You'll swing around here, guys.
Well, so at the same time, do you need all 21 signs on both sides, right? Could you, could you break it up into two? Those, those companies that are currently on Laffino's sign, do they need to have redundancy, and they also have to be on this? Maybe that doesn't have to be 21, maybe that can be 10 on either side, or some variation that is more pleasing to the aesthetics of the area, while still being able to find a common ground. Just kind of spitballing here, but those are something to think about if you guys decide that you want to come back with a different, if it were to get...
Yeah, and that's, that's my concern if we actually do table it, is if we table this, I mean, we've already made recommendations, and we're not getting a response that I want, so does it, does it make sense to even table it at this point, is, is my major concern? If we're just going to drag this out and get a similar response. So, could the applicant step up for just one quick second? So if we were, if we were willing and able to table this, would you be willing to come back with a highly modified version that's more in line with what the city is, is asking to put on the property?
I'm not sure what the direction really is. I mean, I don't know about the Laffino's Avenue, because I have to talk to Diane about that, of working with Laffino's from the Group Lamont. I don't see that sign being large enough to, for, for that purpose of the mall. So, and then also, I don't, I mean, what if we reduced that to five feet? I mean, would that get the job done under there, and fill that with masonry? I think that sign looks nice. I think it's a great design. I mean, like I said, we could fill it with masonry a little bit, make it look like the other signs around, but if I had better direction, I don't think it's, I don't think we should be forced to put a monument sign, or monument sign on a different, someone else's property. You know, they, Group Lamont bought that property, and it has that nice extension on 35 and CJ for a location for a sign. I mean, it's a perfect location.
Yeah, and for the record, I think the Planning Commission is certainly not suggesting or forcing making any decision here to have you put it on someone else's property. I think what the question really is, is that, is that a possibility? And I think the question really asked is, has, as there've been some discussions with respect to it, but, you know, we're not going to, you know, we can't put a position to force you. But I think, you know, the size of it where you're proposing is really what I think is what the commission is, is looking at as an issue, and, and I think one thing I hadn't brought up, but I'll just, if the chair would let me just bring this question up, is it, is it clearly the large digital portion, you know, when you're driving down the highway at, what is the speed limit, 55, but let's be honest, to go a lot faster than that, I understand, you can see that, but the fact is, this other portion, if you look at it, I don't know whose, I mean, eyesight, my eyesight's still pretty good, but those are going to be 21 signs, they're going to be very difficult to see at that speed, and so, you know, the fact is that, whether that's tall or not, I'm not so sure. And I think that could be also one of the issues really is being discussed here, because if you look at the, you know, the graphic discussion of it, it, from a distance, it's going to be, for a couple of seconds, pretty difficult.
I don't know if you'll be able to see the tenant panels from 35, okay? They're designed to be seen from CJ, and, you know, my, my hope would be that we can do this sign like you see it, but I'll, we can maybe work with you if we need to reduce the, the multi-tenant panels a little bit, but if we could still maintain that one structure, that would really, you know, be a practical and efficient kind of thing to do, and, you know, just as long as we still made it look good. And I think it looks good, so, I think we're almost there.
I think based on those discussions, do you have more?
No, no.
I was going to say...
Appreciate the, appreciate the information.
I think it would make sense to table this at least. If you could come back with a proposal, kind of addressing the 21 down at the bottom, perhaps maybe a design, like you said, that has less spaces, something that is more aesthetically pleasing where you can, maybe you can see them from 35, or maybe you don't see them from 35, but at least they're a little bit bigger, they're not stacked upon each other, kind of like the design that Sean brought to us. Any other concerns? And I would like to know whether or not there was some type of, at least, attempt to reach out to Laffino's and to address that.
Okay.
Yeah, and bring the overall size down, just in general, it's ginormous, it's a quite large sign. large sign. Okay, well, was that...
What about the size?
What's that?
You want the overall size?
Again, I would, I would encourage you to work with, with our, our amazing city planners, so, kind of how they're, they're wanting to do that, so I mean, that's kind of out of our jurisdiction to tell you how or what, but, but if, if we would table it, I would encourage you to come back with a very, very good plan that the, the city is very aligned with as well. I think they'll hope...
And perhaps different options, I mean...
Yeah.
Not necessarily just one, but maybe a couple of different options. I don't know if that's feasible.
Definitely feasible.
All right, well, based upon that, I move to table PUD 519 mod 819. Until our next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
With that, we will need a vote. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Schwartz? Yes. Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. With that, four, nothing, the, we will table PUD 519 mod 819, the Beaver Valley Shopping Center signage.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is a subdivision. As you guys are aware, subdivisions are binding and kind of end with us here on the Planning Commission, so any decisions we make here do not go to City Council. So, with that, we'll start with the first subdivision. It is S19-4, Park Overlook Partners 2. Mr. Burkett, if you could enlighten us on this?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The case you have before you is S19-4, the applicant's looking to replat existing Lot 2, which is the entire southern portion of this Park Overlook Drive subdivision. As Planning Commission may remember, a senior apartment complex was approved on the eastern half of this subdivision, so they're here this evening to split that lot so that they can, so that the owners, or future owners of that senior apartments can buy the, that particular lot to be, which will be just over seven acres. The remaining five and a quarter acres to the west will also be created as Lot 2C, and will remain as is now, there's no, no approval of any plans for that two and a quarter acre lot. We did route this out to various agencies, we've got the comments back that we've shared with the applicant before this gets recorded, but, and here's a, just for an overall view. And one thing with this, one of the conditions of approval was that they dedicate some parkland in combination with some fee, fees for park dedication fees based on the number of units. The, the construction drawings aren't finalized yet 100%, so we still need to determine exact acreage that they'll be able to dedicate, so they can have grading that's adequate for the site. Plus, you know, they don't want to, because it's only a partial dedication and part of it is fees, they don't want to pay fees before that they actually get, before they get a permit, or before they're ready to apply for a permit. So, I've talked to the applicant about that, and that would be a future replat that we can do at a staff level, just to accept that park as, as city property. But again, staff does recommend approval of this request, subject to the five conditions in the staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burkett. Do we have anybody from the applicant that...
The applicant is here.
I'm here, but if you have any questions, you'd like to...
All right. Guess I will kind of open this up. Mr. Height? Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Schreider? I had to just have one quick question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm invoking Mr. Self here real fast.
That's okay.
If for some reason they're not able to, to get the site grading that they need, are they able to pay fees instead of, in lieu of the actual acreage that they were going to dedicate as...
I mean, that option would be available, but really, I, they wouldn't need that whole thing. I, it's just, I mean, what, the exact line wasn't known, so we didn't want to put it on a plot now and then have to adjust it later.
Okay, I was just curious, so we didn't have to replat like a little skinny section down to rededicate and do all that stuff, so...
No, I mean, once we know exactly how much land that they need for the grading, I mean, then we'll just create that lot. They'll, they'll be, there's room, it's just the exact amount, we don't know yet.
Awesome, okay. Well, with that, I will need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S19-4 with the attached five conditions.
Need a second?
Mr. Chair, I second.
With that, we'll need a vote.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. Motion carries for zero. And the last case that we have on our docket today is case number S19-5, Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, this case is a replat of an existing Lot 1 of Dunkin' Donuts. You can see, this, it's kind of an L-shaped lot, right, Lot 2 is where the Dunkin' Donuts is under construction right now, and Lot 1 is this L-shaped lot. Actually, this photo was taken in March of 2018, so since then, all the buildings have been removed, and the, and the landscaping's been removed. So, they're looking to replat this into actually three lots, one, a northern lot, which will be a little over one and a half acres, I believe it's 1.6 acres, and then a, the southern lot, which is going, going to be about 0.67 acres. Both of those will remain as is, and then this center lot, Lot 1C, which is a little over 0.6 acres, we're actually looking to purchase that, the city's looking to buy that as right-of-way for the future Lance Road, so you can see how that Lance Road deadens right here, and we're looking to purchase that. And talking with our engineer, you know, we, we're anticipating that to take place within the next couple of months, actually, so the, the purchase of the right-of-way, not the construction of the road, the construction, we're looking to do that, the design for that in 2021, and then the construction in 2022, 2023 timeframe. And that goes along with the, the recently approved children's medical office building. You can see this is where a lot, this is a lot we're, well, this whole thing is a lot we're talking about this evening, but how that is in conjunction with the future of Lance Road and Rock Drive. Staff does recommend approval of this applicant's request, and there are four conditions in the staff report for your consideration.
Fantastic, thank you very much. With that, I will open it up for general questions. I have no questions on my end, this would be pretty, pretty easy. With that, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve case number S19-5 with the attached four conditions.
Mr. Chair, a second.
We'll go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
That, motion carries for zero. We are all out of things to talk about here, so I will need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
And we'll do that by general consensus. Yes?